Genes for our port out people in Haiti got hit by a hurricane a little bit so their compound had some damage, but it's also hosting a bunch of families right now. So district wide on Friday it's a gene day for five hours for all for port out. So the board thought we'd kick it off tonight and do genes.
I did want to note, over the last several years, we've sent almost 100, literally 99 students from state high school gone to participate in activities of port out. In December, another group is going and ironically they're unlikely to be working on clean water, but likely to be working with building effort. And that'll put us at 120 students. So we've been current high school students that have traveled to Haiti during that time. And so we are excited to be able to support it here in terms of from a financial standpoint, but also be able to continue to send students down town.
It's a good thing. All right. Can I have a motion, please, to approve the agenda as printed?
So who?
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries seven zero. Our first scheduled report is the Ed Leader 21 conference.
I just wanted to take this opportunity to talk a little bit about the Ed Leader 21. As you know, it's a group of about, it's a group of about 200 school districts from across the country that participate in Ed Leader 21. And these are districts that have really kind of decided that the focus of education really needs to be on what we term the four Cs, communication, collaboration, creativity, and critical thinking. And so it was an opportunity for us to get together with other districts, like-minded districts from across the country, and really explore what that means and look at the kind of some of the tactical issues associated with it. We were also very fortunate to take a large group. We took 14 staff members, and that is done in a strategic effort to really take a variety of administrators, some new administrators, new to positions, new to the district, some who've been before. Betty actually won the opportunity to go a second year in a row based on some things that she was able to do at the previous conference. So it was just a really good opportunity for us to continue to spread the knowledge of what is going on across the country as it relates to kind of four C education. This year, for the first time at this event, we were also able to take teachers. We took several teachers at a variety of grade levels and really from buildings across the district to let our teachers see. One of the things, one of the key takeaways that they expressed to me was not only opportunity to learn and see, but also to kind of be inspired and see that many of the things that we're doing, many of the challenges that we're facing are being faced by the other districts doing this same type of work. There's not a lot of state assessments. There's not a lot of ways to really feel like, hey, when I talk to other teachers in neighboring districts, many feel a little bit isolated in terms of some of the activities that we're trying to do and the areas we're trying to push. So it was a really great opportunity for us as a school district to be able to continue to share with our staff members right down through our teaching ranks. And so some of the key learning things, and I'll let Mr. Latch who is there jump in, and Mr. Rosenleacher if they want to jump in. But Steve, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about some of the things you.
Sure. So that first bullet point of student will statements, we have been connected with a district in Minnesota outside of Minneapolis, Minnetonka, and they've done a good job of developing specific, what they're calling student will statements. And really what that does is it takes your learner profile. So we've established the learner profile, which is one-page document saying the basic skills we want students to have by the time they graduate from a state high school or alternative high school. And this district has helped us see in their Ed Leader colleagues that we need to develop further these student will statements so we can specifically give teachers documents that show what specifically are the skills you want students to have and examples that they can have so that when they're lesson planning, they can actually see that a little more clearly than just saying, hey, we want you to integrate critical thinking in your lesson. So we're going to work on that with a small team of teachers and administrators. And that team is Michelle Checkowitz from Woodland Meadows, Emily Sickler from the middle school, Steve Alkman, who's a new teacher at Heritage, and Chris Traynor at the high school. And they're going to start developing based on our learner profile, some of these student will statements. So it's something we're excited about for them to work on next.
Are you going to do anything you want?
One of the things I found really exciting is the four Cs were embedded in everything that we learned, but it's growing. It's bigger than just the idea of the four Cs. And one of the things that kind of thematically, they talked a lot, content is in the hands of every kid, right? It's not just, we're not delivering content. They've got it already. So then if they're doing that, it's about what they're creating with that content. So it's taking it to the next level. Really, the students leading the learning and the teachers and administration facilitating those opportunities. And so that was really exciting to see. It was more than just teaching these four Cs. It was what are the kids going to take and grow and create from it? That's going to lead us into the future.
And if I could look at third bullet point as well, is implement common performance assessments? One of the things that Ed Leader is leading the charge in is helping districts see that there's more than just standardized assessments. It's bigger than the SAT and the ACT, and that they're trying to take charge of having districts pilot performance assessments so that we can see that as a viable way to assess in the future and not only rely on standardized assessment. So what we're doing along with 37 other districts and Ed Leader across the United States is there's a real specific performance assessment pilot. And we are doing that at the third grade level and the seventh grade level. In the third grade level, we have Trina Bell and Gabe Clark at Pleasant Ridge who are going to be part of this. And what that means is they're going to implement a performance assessment on ironically implementing future-focused, next-generation classrooms. Like the students have to design a classroom and then use their four C skills, and then they'll be scored on it with a rubric. And then those scores will dump into an interface that is compared with three other scorers across the United States. So they're looking at this. And in seventh grade, they're doing a performance assessment on earthquakes in Bangladesh, which is sort of looking at a world problem and what's going to happen with fault lines in Bangladesh. And that's going to be with Laura Odom and Kirsten Zemitis at the middle school. And we also have Mary Ladford, who is an Ed Leader Network participant. And Betty and myself are going to also help score these assessments. And we're going to compare with the 37 other districts that are doing this work too. So we're excited about that.
As I mentioned, in terms of increasing staff awareness, that was another key takeaway and a key point was to continue to really make sure that this isn't Ed Leader 21 and/or these four Cs are not things that are just discussed at the administrative level and it goes throughout the district. One of the other things, and Steve noted this, is that looking at other districts or other countries, the United States produces more entrepreneurs. And one of the things that we were looking at was related to the, you know, some of the major assessments where it shows that, hey, the United States is lagging behind in several indicators. But when it comes to entrepreneurs, the U.S. continues to produce more. And I think that the conversation there was trying to show that at some, on some level, we are producing the type of student. It's just the traditional measures are no longer really what is being valued when it comes from an economic standpoint moving forward. So that would continue to be something we will investigate. Leveraging the PLC, which is a professional learning community, Southwest Allen is a school district just outside of Fort Wayne, Indiana. It's certainly drivable. You can get there on West Dorps. They came and visited us last year. We went and visited them. The demographics of that district, the size of that district are very similar to us. They're doing similar things. And so we intend to work with their administration to set up additional back and forth. Again, it's a drive down there. You can see some things for the day, two of their districts come back because they will do the same. And I'm just going to call it District 102. I don't know exactly how to pronounce it. But they were interested in some of the things we're doing, excited to come. They were interested in coming to see some of the things we're doing. They're a K8 district just outside of Chicago. And so we'd likely have them bring a team to us, and then we would send a team to them. Again, get our feet on the ground and really learn from other practitioners. So we're not talking about going to see another conference or going to learn from vendors. We're talking about people like ourselves and really sharing that learning. And we feel like that's kind of a real authentic opportunity for us to continue to grow and develop new ideas. And then lastly, Leadership Academy. They're starting a Leadership Academy. We're on a problem with practice, which really means focusing on what is an issue we're having with our implementation and how can we move forward with it. Mr. Latch, Mr. Rosenleacher, and another Sleen area school staff member will be participating in Leadership Academy. It will start till next summer. But again, continue to try and grow and broaden our base when it comes to moving forward with some of the kind of future-focused student led efforts that we've been trying to do. So I wanted to give you this outstanding learning opportunity for us. And we appreciate the board's support and our continued professional growth. Any questions?
How many total people attended?
There were 700, I think, was what they said. It was, it was big. It was pretty good.
It was more than there.
Five hundred. Five hundred.
That's a lot.
The first one they had was only 200. So they've grown. In the state of Michigan, Birmingham, ourselves, Bloomfield Hills, and the whole base will Farmington Hills are all members of Ed Leader. Those are the Ed Leader 21 districts in Michigan. Ohio, there's a Cleveland has seen significant growth in the Columbus area. Regionally, I think other areas that have a lot, and I want to say a lot, several of the Ed Leader districts.
And then we've talked about potentially posting it at one point a while ago when the numbers weren't so small. But we can get all the districts together.
We're trying to get some more regional focus because of the, you know, the travel is one thing. So to the extent that we can get, there's a day coming up in spring, actually it's the Friday of our spring break, April 7th. They're having an event in Columbus. They've grown town where they're having events, regional events on the coast and then locally. That is one. But ultimately, and Steve and I were able to attend a peer district meeting in Bloomfield Hills. And really what Bloomfield Hills was talking about with the other 12 and school peer districts in Michigan really was a lot of the same concepts in terms of innovative learning. How do you blend curriculum? How do you blend, you know, staff interaction to try and strengthen the experience that our students get?
Sounds like a nice little program. Glad that we are involved in that. And it really set an example for other districts of, you know, how we actually implement those four Cs in real-world learning. So thank you.
Thank you. Action items. Can I have a motion to reappoint Patty Tanner to the Sleen District Library Board of Trustees for a two-year term ending November 30th, 2018?
Support. Patty's been on for, this will be, will be her third appointment. Donna has done an excellent job of representing the Sleen schools. We continue to talk to her about any issues that come up. They are obviously in transition with the passing of Director Dean Hammer. And so they're really trying to bring some stability and really thinking about what's next for the Sleen District Library. It's a wonderful community asset. So we think she's an appropriate representative for the district.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. The motion carries seven zero. Cut of a motion to approve the technology purchase for Wi-Fi access points in the amount of $114,756.52 submitted by Assistant Superintendent Warren.
Can you move?
Support.
So this comes at the recommendation of our technology director, Troy Wissick. And we had purchased some wireless access points earlier in the bond process. And these are additional access points to just make our, improve the speed density of our system.
So they'll flower out into all the buildings.
Right.
I believe mostly at the high schools still, right?
I don't know that he said in this one, but he may have told you.
Is it taking care of the halls in certain rooms and areas where they can't seem to have access to that?
Shortly after the start of school, it's one thing to set up your network when kind of when you don't have as many devices. Once the devices came in, they were able to do what they call the heat map. Based on the heat map, determine where the key area, frankly, there are a lot of key areas. Two to $114,000. We really are in a spot where we cannot have enough bandwidth and enough wireless access points. And we were probably going to get to a point where you almost see an access point per classroom. Unable to avoid that, but it continues. Just the amount of access that's going on in a school building is, is good, but.
Are bandwidths still sufficient to support all that?
You know, sufficient, you know, probably. You know, is it what we would want? No. So what we've done is we have internet through the ISD merit network. We also have a Comcast. One, we've talked about even a third leg to try and bring some reliability. So there's two. One is speed and whatnot. The other one is having multiple legs so that if there an issue goes down, there's still general access. And so they continue to build it. I would say that you will see something in the near term for more access in that regard. I think that we talked about the sinking fund legislation as it relates to technology. This is an example of an area where, you know, this is, this is becoming, you know, I've made the joke now that we'd be better off without having the power go out as long as our Wi-Fi stayed on. We could continue to have school. Kind of because when the internet and the network goes down, it is almost debilitating now, not only from a standpoint of an instructional standpoint, but almost from all of our operations are tied in now. And so it's very difficult. So we're going to continue to invest in that network. We're not buying a lot of devices, but we're going to spend a lot of money on the network.
Is this something we were planning for?
It's part of the, I mean, it was part of our plan. We went with step one, assessed it, and this is step two. So I wouldn't call this new. It will be just, but it will be a second phase.
How many did we buy? About the same amount or last time?
Last time it was about 300.
And when you think about that, you know, people say, well, the Wi-Fi is not great. We spent a half million dollars on Wi-Fi very quickly to try and improve the access.
2,000 users up in the high school, so.
Well, and the reality is users, but users with multiple devices is what, you know, it used to be, say, the vision when we started talking about some of this stuff was that we were going to have, everyone would have a device connected at all times. Well, we didn't factor in, everyone could have maybe two or three devices they want to connect at one time. So we're continuing to work that segment, the network, and do look at other strategies to try and break balance.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries seven zero. Discussion items. Board Finance Committee update.
September 15th, we met to discuss some changes to the budget. We're still waiting on the final audit to come back, but there will be some changes on that and kind of discuss teachers, hire, new hires. And there's just a lot of changes that went on this summer. Since we had our budget, we adopted a original budget.
And I think we are targeting the first meeting in November for the audit.
Correct.
So that'll be.
That's been confirmed.
Okay.
They'll have a date.
Election Day will be the audit.
I did see in the paper that the ISD distributed the special education millage funds from that recent thing. And we were the recipient of $7.84 million in what I would consider one-time funds until we get everything settled next year when the other part of that millage goes up for election again next November. So I think budget-wise, and we talked about a little bit of, you know, being, treading lightly on not overstaffing and still best practicing our special education way that we always have. So.
I just included in your, we have had count day, which was last Wednesday. I will tell you, it's certainly unaudited. There's a window of time. There's a couple of things related to enrollment. One, I wanted to make sure the board were, we took 65 students from a school of choice, the vast majority of which over two-thirds were elementary, kindergarten students. And we've kind of hit that 330 range for our incoming kindergarten class. We graduated around 460 students last year. So you can see that, you know, we are likely to be down students anywhere between 35 and 45 students from a head count standpoint. Understand that means we're up between if we're graduating 460 and bringing on 330. We have 130 students to make up. If we're only down that, we actually add students. But the net impact is that we're likely to be down students overall from that. Should we budget flat? We'll make that adjustment as needed. We did have 85 students on the school of choice waitlist that were not offered slots. So again, we've made a strategic decision to allow our internal residency growth or, you know, birth rate kind of determine our enrollment. And I think that continues to be an effective strategy. And so I'm not overly concerned about where our enrollment's at. But just be aware that we kind of continue to manage that effectively, you know, students and individuals within the county largely that would like to come here that we're kind of leaving on a waitlist on an annual basis. We currently have about 408 non-resident students, which is approximately 7.5% of our total enrollment. As you know, we've said we're going to cap that at 10%. So we've got some capacity if we were to take more. And understand now that we're also in a position now we've been doing this long enough that we're graduating a cohort of non-resident students. So we're getting to the point where likely to be close to that seven and a half to eight percent range over time if we continue in the current model as it relates to our school of choice numbers. So many of the school of choice families or students we see now are family members of existing school of choice. I don't know the exact number of that, but I know when Mr. Latch and I conduct that lottery, there is a stack of siblings invariably that do go to the top of the lottery process. And so it is interesting to see that. We also have students that come as school of choice and eventually become residents. So we kind of handle those and shift those into the district. But that's, we're continuing to kind of outperform some of the original Platte Moran numbers. And certainly, I think I mentioned, I anticipate from a, from a housing standpoint that we're probably a year away from maybe starting to see some increased housing. I think ultimately, our Houghton Development or Cypress Ridge Development is helping us. But the Pittsfield area is another area that really produces a lot of students to the extent that Pittsfield Township can get some housing started to go on. I think that would help with enrollment. Harvard Farms has been a real strong sub for us in Pittsfield. So we'll continue to monitor that.
That new one they're proposing in textile state that's in our.
A portion is, yeah, there's a portion. There's some, it's kind of a dicey area out there, but a portion of that would be. I will say that, that is kind of our, the targeted area for school of choice families too. That if they're south of 94, many have identified that Sleen is just a, one, they feel, hopefully feel we're a quality exclusion. But ultimately, just from a logistical standpoint, it's easier to get to our schools than it is to some of the schools based on traffic flow north of 94. So not only is it some of that's in our district, those that aren't maybe students that want to come here.
Any questions?
Bond update.
All right. I will jump back up. And we're continuing to work on the summer 2017 bond. To that end, I just want to give you a little bit about the work that's going to be done next summer. About $13 million worth of work this coming summer. If you remember, we did about $14 million last year. So when you think about it from a pure dollar standpoint, all the work on Pleasant Ridge, all the site work done, we're looking at something very similar from a volume standpoint next year. I want to be right up front. We're going to rebuild Tibo Drive. If you've driven on Tibo Drive, you should stop doing that. It's incredible work. No, we ultimately are going to make sure we get that done next summer. That's a key spot for us. And that service drive sees a lot of traffic and a lot of influence. We'll be adjusting and dealing with that. We're doing a lot of site work at the middle school and the senior center. One of the things that we had talked about was doing as part of this work this next summer was doing a drive from the kind of the back of the current middle school near the senior center out to Woodland Drive. We met with the senior center, folks have talked with them. We've been looking at that. At this point, we're not anticipating doing that. The key component is reconfiguring that area of the parking lot. They're more interested in feeling like that could make it a safer environment for them. The back exit between the existing bus lot, the fact that there are tennis courts there, the fact that there is our underground fuel tanks in the existing bus lot limits some of the flexibility there. And so the way the operation worked back there in order to get a drive to the back, this really wasn't, wasn't something that would be able to be done without an inordinate cost. And I think they really felt like the, just in the middle, the parking lot will be step one to making sure that that's a safe environment there. Middle School Media Center, really looking at that as, and I don't hesitate to use the word hub, but essentially a hub-like environment for our middle school students. And that really will be, I think, kind of like Pleasant Ridge this year, that from a, from an instructional design piece will be the place that most exciting and not that I don't get excited about new parking lots and boilers and roofs and such. But that really is something that I think will all be very proud of. And I would love to see us having a meeting there next year at the, at the existing middle school media center and even some adjacent spaces there. Site work on the east side of the middle school. If you've been in those parking lots, those are continuing to kind of deteriorate. We're going to look at, kind of rebuilding the east side parking lot. We're not looking at changing a whole lot, but rebuilding those asphalt areas that have started to degrade. And then also adding a walkway, a pedestrian walkway, kind of mid-point between the two roundabouts that would lead over to Harvest. That one will allow for some transition between if there are major events on either side of the road, whether it be Harvest, your grandparents' day, or major events in the auditorium, or even some of our larger football events where people are parked in Harvest and getting across. And also for connecting, many of our students walk back and forth during the day. I'll be very frank, I often see them kind of cutting across because that is the most direct route and not necessarily going to the roundabouts. And so we're going to be putting that in again to continue to increase the flexibility of pedestrian traffic on that campus area. We continue to see that as a viable improvement. Looking at Liberty School site building, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. But one of the, one of the programs that we, or two of the programs that we are existing in our current elementary buildings, ECSE, which is the Early Childhood Specialist Program in Blue Corner, two pre-K programs that we offer. Blue Corner currently exists at Woodland Meadows, ECSE currently exists at Pleasant Ridge. This past week, we met with the various groups involved and have decided they will be moving here for the 17, 18 school year. So we've begun the design process associated with moving those programs here. It's one of the things, we've talked about Liberty School over the years, that we really have to try to decide, okay, what does this building look like and become? How do we go about continuing to make this a viable building and ultimately alleviate some of the pressures we see? With the addition of the sections that we added, remember we added some kindergarten sections late and really did kind of curtail some of the flexibility of the building. So by bringing those programs here, we can create some synergy around those programs, but also alleviate some of the congestion. Elementary really put us in a position over time that we feel like we'll be in really good shape related to those. So we're starting that process. I also, on a kind of self-repute, I feel like bringing students to this building will continue to add some energy and life to this building. We have the alternative program. We have the childcare facility, and we have the adult program. But to the extent that we have kids and students in the building and activity with that, I think that does add to the school feel and has some value to that. And we want to make sure it's a special environment for our students. It's really where they're at. One of the things you'll see, the LED projects, we pulled those projects out of management from Clark and King Scott. And those are things now that we're handling in-house. One, some cost savings associated with that. We're able to do some shift work. And we've kind of segmented that. So that's been a strategic decision that we've made in order to do that. We continue to bid those effectively. But that's something we'll be able to do. Maybe doing some of those during the school year and away from the summer project. Wanted to touch on a little bit of this building and ultimately this space. This will become town hall. We're marble floor throughout. Oh, wait, no. So we are looking at adjusting the entry point here and creating a secure entry. So many of you came in here tonight to come to the meeting. Looking at putting a door in here, this is the existing door that goes into the district office. But if you see not dissimilar to some of the things we've done in our elementary buildings, it's shifting the, the existing counter. It will be a different counter, but the current counter goes this way, shifting it and putting it here. So when someone comes in during the school day, they would come right into these doors here and be addressed with our office staff there. Again, to try and make sure this year, ultimately during the school day, they would be able to get into this area. These doors would be locked. They would buzz in and come in this way and then come out that way. Ultimately, to this particular building in terms of looking at what we're trying to do related to this building, this is going to change slightly in terms of the way this is configured, but the concept is similar. Having a door that goes this way into the community ed office and/or ultimately this way. We're going to need to shift that, but essentially walling off that area, having doors that come in here. We actually are going to think differently. I think that would likely become a storage room. But again, making this a more viable space. We have a lot of meetings that we want to do in here during the day. It's awkward as it relates to community ed that's going on. There are parents coming and signing up for classes. And so really adjusting that a little bit, I think, is going to continue to add some value to what we're looking at. But if you get, so you can kind of see these, again, developing that secure entry is a point. The other thing, honestly, when we have a lot of large-scale meetings here, it's appropriate bathroom. We have the one bathroom on the corner, and then the other one's down. There is a small staff bathroom back there. We're kind of adjusting that and kind of creating a, more of a space where we could have a lot of meetings here. If you had a large meeting during the day, there would be appropriate facilities for the, for the participants as it relates to this building. They're really making this space in this room something more of a community meeting space. Probably doing something different with some of our furnishings in order to make it a more viable meeting space. It may mean us having actually a board desk of some kind or something, even if it's something, one with modesty, somewhat curved, and so we can use it effectively as it relates to, to the building, not only for this, but for others. The other addition would be really looking at the site work, the parking lots. If you've driven them, you know they need to be, to be updated. We plan and intend to do that. We also want to make and look at improving some of the safety associated with this parking lot. There are some awkward points in this parking lot just over, over the years. The first one is kind of this one. We're looking at trying to figure out, and there may be some adjustments still to how this works. If you look, you can kind of see that it's flattening this out a little bit. If it's kind of an awkward turn there, the necessity for that has long since disappeared with the kind of the bus traffic. But we still know we need to have, we want to have at least. the, kind of, the bus traffic, but we still know we need to have, we wanna have at least one area, if not two areas, for buses to pick up and drop off at this facility. We intend to continue to have a young adult program here, so having bus parking here, but also with ECSE and potentially Pooh Corner, we're talking about having a, kind of, a bus apron up at the top level there, so the bus, ECSE does, we do provide transportation, and so there are often, that would be enough space for a couple of buses to stack and drop students who come in that far northwest, pardon me, northeast corner. Looking at adjusting, and I'm gonna kinda swing around here, this area right now, you pull right through, there's a lot of high-traffic area through, frankly, it's a three-way stop, but idea of putting a sidewalk bearing in there and adjusting, so when you were to come in, if you were to go here, you go here, and really making this a dead end. And the reason to do that, if that's gonna be our preschool area, ECSE, we wanna make sure that there's not a lot of fast-moving traffic in that area, so the traffic that's closest to the building will be more of a pull-in, stop, turn around, come back away. So again, trying to look at that. We're still working on this, you notice a sidewalk here, we've spent a lot of time trying to figure out what is the best way to transition vehicles and frankly, buses and pedestrians to this area here, so we've really tried to figure out what are some ideas to do there. And you'll notice on the far side, kind of a staff parking area, we'd like to get as many parking spots near this area so that these parking spots up front, and we actually talked, these may adjust a little bit there, try and create more parking close to this bill, to this room in particular, so that people who come in during, for events and whatnot are able to park close to that and get to that entry point so that we can have, make this, continue to make this a more viable meeting space, not only for our school activities but also for our community activity as we move forward. So those are some of the things, there's still a lot to be done with that summer bond work, but those are some of the things. Any questions about the bond work for next summer?
What's the population of the ECSE in Pooh Corner these days, I mean, just like three classrooms were.
So essentially, the ECSE has three classrooms, Pooh Corner has three classrooms, and when I say Pooh Corner, I should note that it also is our Great Start Readiness Program, which is a program that we've continued to focus on as part of Goal One and expand with that with students. And then all, but in addition to that would be playground areas, a motor, what we call a motor room, and if I go back here, one, so one of the things, a couple of things, we tried to be thought, be creative, okay, what if you put the playground in the courtyard? Wouldn't that be a great idea? Conceptually, it would be a great idea. It'd be safe, it's secure, it'd be in the middle. The downside is we would potentially need to develop a second exit point, that's considered an interior room in an unsprinkled building, and while there has not been a school fire in literally decades that has cost students life, our fire codes continue to be onerous, and we need to make sure that we honor those effectively. But anyways, so we would need to develop a second exit point that would go directly, not into a secondary room, but ultimately to a corridor that would lead directly outside. So we are having them investigate, looking at a corridor that would go through the classrooms there and go right out, there's actually a hallway down in here that would go straight out to the, to the exit area there. So that would be, that's one scenario that we're looking at, we're concerned about the overall square footage of the courtyard area, and then ultimately whether or not it's cost prohibitive to do that, develop that exit kinda strategy from there. There is, there are exits on the bottom side that dump into the cafeteria and into the former teacher's lounge. The downside is those go to existing, they would be helpful, but they go to existing rooms, and so that, again, is a fire issue there. So the next area we're looking at would be to look at developing this area into playground areas. It would still be to the south of that north drive, so it wouldn't have students that have to cross to get to, right now, the little stars, a lot of times they'll use the existing tennis court area for a fenced playground area, but develop a playground area up against the building. If that doesn't work, next step would be to go across the drive and look in the area between east of that park, the proposed new parking lot and just adjacent to the tennis court area, take it, develop a large playground area for ECSE. So those are, again, additional costs that are not, that were not part of our original bond as associated with. That means that we have some funds that maybe, and Pooh Corner I know has opportunity with Great Start Readiness to get a grant, help on some of those.
So those tennis courts out there, playing and staying in their current state for now, or?
As of right now, I will say they're used for a few different things, but ultimately, we do have a senior group that uses the gymnasium during the year and uses that group. We do see some people out there, we may say, maybe to a point we want it, hey, let's keep two, and I do have a board member who was a tennis player, so I gotta be careful about it, you know that. Actually, he probably played on there.
I played on.
You can get rid of him. Interestingly, one of the very first, I'll go into a history loss, but the very first CARES grant that we received was to turn those tennis courts into a roller hockey rink. Carlos Strux had put that together, and there were some matching funds that were never able to happen, and so it didn't happen, but that was.
Tran is still in favor of that.
They've been on the, they've been on the dock before. That would be in a natural area, ideally, we'd still like to be closer to the building than that, but we have to see whether or not the capacity is for that. We are talking, one of the major issues with the preschool program is access to bathrooms, and so we are proposing that we do some bathrooms, the science rooms in the far corner have some plumbing that can help with that, but that gets costly, so that's what we're working on right now is to try and develop. What is, what can we do, and how much is it gonna cost, and how can we do that? The one thing I do wanna note about the work that you can, you see what's going on here, we've talked a little bit about what's going on in the interior of the building, when you think about the demolition and work being due, the power being cut, the water being turned off, we're gonna need to probably after the first year develop a plan for what goes on with the operations here. Certainly, there's a lot of summer programs that occur here, student-based, that we need to be concerned about and first find a spot for. Secondly, would be our enrollment office, that's a very busy place in August, and so we're almost certain not to be able to have consistent access to things here, so we're gonna likely have to have a temporary office, business office, human resources, again, busy times for them in the summertime, we may need to go off-site during various points, and so we're gonna have to develop a strategy to find alternative locations, so depending on our July and August board meetings, likely will not be here because of that, so we'll just need to kinda think through how we wanna handle that.
Takes a while to get all that marble tile down.
Yeah, then you guys wanted the leather, it'd take a while.
Yeah.
Full screen, all that.
Thank you.
Superintendent Evaluation, we talked about this at our last meeting a little bit, and Secretary Delhae and I had gone to some training last December, and my reading of the law qualified us for training the trainers. Other people who are really lawyers don't think that qualifies for that, so we're in a little bit of a discussion with the Michigan Association of School Boards right now about how to train and what to train, so I think we've put out some questions to them, so there'll be some new stuff on that. Interesting, interestingly enough, there are no penalties for not doing things in the law, so not to say that we're not law-hyde citizens here, so we're working on it, stuff more used to follow. We're still gonna use, I think, their form, but I may go off the wall a little bit, and there are other options.
So it's mostly related to the training of?
They're insistent that they have to train us, and it is basically the same form we've used for the last five or six years.
We, yeah, we, I, working with Mr. Hynek, I investigated the opportunities for training, and one, they did say that they expect that every person is trained, and looking at that, we said, well, could we do something at the county level where we have a date at the county and all the board members who could attend would attend, and that would suffice? No, they wanted to do with individual districts. They did indicate that they felt like the WISD should have funds to support that, it's about seven hundred and fifty dollars to train the board, if it's about a three or four-hour training. And so we have a meeting on Friday with the superintendents, and that's one of the items is to determine, are there dollars at the ISD that could support that? And so that's one thing, the other thing is then when is the time? It does feel, I'm gonna be very frank, it does feel like you're kind of, there's ambiguity to be asked, get their legal opinion, we've gotten ugly legal opinions, and they're somewhat, I would say at odds, but they certainly, it could be interpreted a couple of different ways, and so we're trying to determine what's the best model out there. A lot of us will flush out over the next couple of years, but ultimately, we do need to sort of open for next year.
We may go rogue this year, so.
So they're not just a guideline?
It's three to four hour training. There's a law, and then there's the people who are interpreting the law. The law is not, I will be, the law's not, I'm not saying clear, and so you have people who've stayed, the spirit is this, the spirit is that, and, you know, the law doesn't say the train-to-trainer model will work. The law doesn't say the train-to-trainer model wouldn't work. There's nothing that says if, if one person is trained, that that person conducts the evaluation and the other board members work through that, I mean, there's just a lot of ambiguity here when you say everyone needs to be trained, doesn't say, well, if six people come and one doesn't show up, does the other person not have a voice? I mean, they're just, it seems to be.
Plus, you have turnover on your board, I mean, every time you have to, I mean, you shouldn't have to train, you still have five board members left, you get two new ones, you shouldn't have to pay to train the two new ones on a form that's relatively simple and easily understood by people.
So what are our options right now? Do we move ahead in good faith what we originally had planned on doing?
I'm not sure yet.
Okay. We do have a couple of, I think we're also gonna look at what are, what are some other folks locally doing, you know, the kind of the idea that there's strength in numbers and in that regard, so we wanna see what are other people looking at as far as options. The one thing that is a part of this is that there's essentially a link that you have to have on your website related to administrative evaluations, and MASP, if you go through this training, you get that link, and so the ability to have that link, there's frankly value in that. That is a part that's very specific about the minds, we talked about the research base associated with this tool, and so it's not as though just using any tool and giving us all trained and it's work, there has to be some specific nature to the tool and how it's embedded at the state level, so.
And a little bit of, it's a timing issue. We're due to give this evaluation by the end of the year because we do financial evaluation at the end of the school year, not evaluation evaluation, so we're trying to figure it out as fast as we can, so just stay tuned. We'll get it figured out. Consent Agenda, can I have a motion to authorize the following items as part of the consent agenda? A, approval of the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of September twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen. B, approval of payment of the general fund accounts payable of October eleventh, two thousand sixteen, in the amount of nine hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents. C, receiving and file the September curriculum, finance, and human resources report. G, approval of payment of the bond fund accounts payable of October eleventh, two thousand sixteen, in the amount of nine hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-seven cents. And H, approval of a whole slew of field trips that are happening.
Support?
Did I read the? Field trip dollars, the whole slew of them. It's go time. Did someone second?
I did.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Actually, the motions have all been doing six-zero, I forgot, Secretary Delhae was not here tonight, so pardon my man skills. Next agenda, we will have the Alternative High School report, and we will be down the hallway in the Alternative High School Next Gen Room for our meeting. Carol's very happy.
Spotlight on alternative ed?
Alternative ed, so there are times coming. I do have a, in the spring, we're going to be at the middle school, and then I think the cycle starts over again. I think we did the date, so we can let you know if you'd like to plan two years in advance. Nope. This is the second opportunity for public comment, would anyone like to make a public comment?
I do have one last comment, and it relates to public comment. If you notice, we have essentially a fancy music stand as our lectern. The previous lectern we had broke, I don't wanna blame anyone, but it broke, and so Jeff Berman had the, had the idea of having it, taking the, the one we had, it was part of the board, and certainly once it broke, is not to be repaired, by taking it, having it measured and having one built by our woods department at the middle school, so I dropped that, or he dropped that off with Mr. Gillow in the, one of our seventh and eighth grade woods classes is actually building. So the lectern we'll have shortly, it may be a little odd yet, but will be one that is built by our standard school students, so we're excited to get it back. Until then, it's gonna be a mic stand and a, and a music stand.
So I have a question about parking passes at the end of the year, 'cause my birthday's May ninth, and I know it's sixty-five dollars at the beginning of the year, it's just my birthday was May ninth, I got my license approximately fifteen days before school ended, and it was thirty-five dollars with fifteen days of school left, but at the beginning of the year was sixty-five, and I was just curious as to why it was still that much considering that was more than the amount of days of school that was left.
It was there. Yeah. However. So I don't know the answer to that, I had to pay thirty-five for my daughter as well, so.
Essentially, I recall that it was prorated, but it was prorated, it's either basic, I had to surprise it was thirty-five and not thirty-two fifty, ultimately, I know it went to half after half, but.
We will adjust that.
I just, thank you.
Okay, our next meeting of the Board of Education will be held on October twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen, at six thirty PM in the Alternative High School Next Gen Room round hallway. Can I have a motion to adjourn the regular Board of Education meeting of October eleventh, two thousand sixteen, at seven twenty-four PM?
So moved. Word?
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing on the motion carries six-zero. Thank you, everyone.